Welcome back, everyone. This tonight is the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, September 6th, 2017. It is 7:05, and I will call the Northborough School Committee into its session. First item, welcome back. Miss, first item on our agenda is the action on the minutes from our open meeting of June 7th, 2017.
Chair, I would like to move that we approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, June 7th, 2017. As presented.
Yes. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Yes, thank you. Next item on our agenda is new business, back-to-school opening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, it was, or it is hard to believe that it's been several months since we gathered here to talk about how education is continuing to take place in our district. And we have had an amazing start to the new school year, to the 2017-2018 school year. This evening, we have a number of people here who would like to share with you what has been taking place since our last meeting in June. We welcomed back our teachers on the 28th, August 28th, Monday, to a gathering at the high school where it has become tradition that we do come together as one community and have a chance to catch up with colleagues and really talk about the initiatives and teaching and learning, which is certainly at the heart of what we do. And then quickly, they returned, teachers all returned to their schools where they were engaged in professional development opportunities, and then the next day, getting ready for the opening of school and welcoming back, really, the reason why we're all here, and that's our students on Wednesday. Each year, of course, we have some startup challenges, and each year in September, we do talk a little bit about those challenges. This year, we did have some, I don't want to say usual busing challenges, because when it's one child, it's not usual, it's unique to every student. But I think through the good work of Cheryl and Pauline Jankas at Central Office, and also the collaborative spirit of NRT, which is our bus transportation company, we were able to address most of those startup issues. We continue to work on it because we're not happy until all of our routes are as they should be, and every child is on the bus in the morning and delivered home at the time that we expect. So we're continuing to engage in those conversations. I do want to thank principals for their due diligence, and certainly all of their staff at the school, and also for the parents out in the community. They've certainly reached out to us with concerns, but they've also reached out to us when the bus has been on time over the last three or four days, and it was greatly appreciated. They were very helpful in identifying those kinds of issues that we wanted to quickly address. So I do want to appreciate their patience and also thank them for their support through the first couple of days. So we do have some additional updates on enrollments, and we're happy to say and share that we welcomed 62 new students at the K-5 level since we closed our doors in June and opened again in August. And that is always a joyful opportunity when we get to say hello to students. And we'll be talking a little bit more in enrollments. As always, our maintenance and custodial staff has done a phenomenal job readying the schools for our teachers and our students to return. And already, at the building level, we've had so many activities that have taken place that really invite the community, the school community, into our schools and really to get to know the parents and our students. So as each principal provides their update, I'm sure we'll hear more about those activities. I'd like to thank everyone at Central Office who is here, actually, this evening to provide a brief update in terms of what we've done over the summer. It's always fun to welcome back everyone on August 28th, but Central Office never leaves, and so it's closing one year and opening up another. So there are a lot of people here this evening that will share with you what's taken place and provide some annual updates. It's sort of our one time when we all gather together. I'd like to thank the committee, as always, for continued support through all of the things that take place over the summer and all of the things that took place last year and will take place again this year. It's really appreciate the support, and it makes what we do so much easier, and that means we can provide the best for our kids and for our parents. So with that said, Madam Chair, do we want to start with the principals?
All right, I'll start. So at the Proctor School, we had an excellent opening day. Our students returned and welcomed many new faces, and I was just so proud of them for our returning students who just, you know, picked up and helped our new students who didn't know where to go or who might not be familiar with the routine. It was just seamless. They came out, they supported, they helped, they welcomed. And by the end of the day, there was so many of our new faces, new students saying, "Gosh, I made a new friend today, I'm so happy I'm here." So that was really nice to see because we know how tough a transition to a new school can be. I was able to spend time at every classroom with them, with the students, welcoming them back, creating classroom communities, working on our shared school goals. Everyone was in wonderful spirits. We did our school spirit day on Fridays. There was lots of green and yellow to be seen with the students and the staff, and just, you know, very excellent, strong, smooth opening to the school year, so we're excited about the year ahead.
Same at the Z-School, different group of people, but we also had an amazing start. We kind of started earlier in August because the English Language Development Program is with us through the month of August. I'm sure Florida will give us an update on that. So I wasn't alone for the month of August, which was really pretty amazing. We're really happy to add Maude Brasswell to the Z-School staff as the special education teacher for Language-Based Learning Center. So she has joined our ranks and is making a world of difference to our students who have pretty defined, well-defined needs in terms of learning, how to read and write. I do want to thank Alan Phelps for orchestrating our opening day ceremonies. We typically have the fifth graders have their first opportunity to take over the morning announcements at school. So a couple of students raised the flag. Maggie O'Connell led our Pledge of Allegiance, and then Julia Pentiato-Barcelos sang while Evan Morgan played guitar to our National Anthem. So it was a great way to open the day. We had lots of excitement in the cafeteria because we have two cafeteria workers, a new manager, Pearl Hatch, and a new worker, Lisa Harlow. So that's been interesting to get new people into the cafeteria. So I want to thank Kyle Parsons for mentoring them through. We also do a postcard collection and letters over the course of the summer, so our students are very well-traveled. So if you want to see where they were this summer, we'd love for you to come by and just visit with us. It's been a great opening, and I'm very excited to be back through the year.
And at Peaslee School, we've also had an exciting beginning to the school year. This year, for our new student tour, Lisa Miranda, who's a third grade teacher, led the tour. We had, I believe, over 20 children who joined us for that. And at the end of the first day of school in bus line, I asked one of the students, a new student, "So how was your day today?" And he said, "I had a great day." He said, "Ever since I went to the new student tour yesterday, I couldn't wait to come to school today." Which just tells you a lot about Ms. Miranda and a lot about that tradition of having the new student tour. We have also welcomed some new cafeteria staff. Judy Maloney and Sherry Nesbit have joined us, and we have a new speech teacher, Katie Foley. We are thrilled to have all of them there with us. We also had our first day of school, all-school assembly. Our tradition is to get together, and we sing "This Land is Your Land" all together every year, so always a joyful experience there. Our PTO started the year off with a bang. Last Thursday, we had our Welcome Back to School Evening Event for all families. We had a family picnic out in the backyard. The weather held out, and it was an absolutely gorgeous evening. And we had the band Hit the Bus come and provide live music, and Allman's Ice Cream Truck came and sold ice cream for anyone who was interested. So we had a great time, wonderful turnout. PTO did an amazing job organizing that for us. We are very excited that Peaslee School has once again received an NEF grant for Science on the Go Bags, which will be backpacks full of science material that families can check out and take home to use. And all four of the schools will be enjoying ukuleles, thanks to the NEF grant process. They'll have a ukulele music program. We all will be celebrating open house on the 19th, so we'll be inviting families to come and join us, see the school. And I wanted to make a special thank you, as Christine mentioned, the custodial staff, Tom Mayler, Kevin Walsh, Jose Baez, at Peaslee School have done an amazing job of getting the school ready, catching up some painting and cleaning the school, so it's absolutely sparkling. And I also wanted to thank our school secretary, Jean Pinjob, because she has done an amazing job of getting the school up and running and dealing with lots of questions and classroom assignments and all those things that happen at the beginning of the year, so a special shout-out to her tonight. Thank you.
So ditto. We also had a really great opening at Lincoln Street. We were actually in such great shape at Lincoln that we were able to host the Parks and Rec Camp for a couple of weeks in August, which we hadn't had the pleasure of doing, and they came in and they were really nice, partnered with us. They were very careful with the new school and took great care, and the kids were so happy to be with us, and we haven't been able to do that in several years now, so we're happy to host them. Like my colleagues have said, our staff has been amazing over the summer. There's no such thing as, I think, a teacher in Northborough who doesn't come in over those summer months and work to get things ready and just right for the beginning of the school year. We saw all of our staff members in, our custodial staff, our front-office staff. They did everything possible to make sure that we were ready and up and running for our students and families to come back to Lincoln Street. I personally was pretty surprised myself when I made the agenda for the first-day meeting where I noted that we had 14 either new staff members or staff grade changes or assignment changes over the course of the summer, including a new cafeteria manager, change in our technology staff, changes in special education, and the addition of the therapeutic learning program that Lincoln Street is hosting. And that's gone very, very well so far. We've already noticed just such a shift in the building with supports that we've been able to provide for our students who really needed a different level of supporting care during the school day. So, so far, so good with all of that. The other thing I wanted to note is that even though that's a district-wide program that's being housed at Lincoln Street, the Lincoln Street staff has really done a great job of embracing and talking about how are we going to work together, and when one of your program people is out, how will we all come together to help make that work for students? So that's been great to see, starting out. We've also had several grants that were funded by the NEF, including one that Peter wrote for some add-ons to our document cameras with microscopes for science, one for movement through the phys ed class, and one for an empathy theme that we're going to be rolling out this year. So through the partnership with support from NEF and through our PTO, we started the year with a school-wide read called Only One You, which is focusing our students on you're only one person, but how can you make a difference? And as a follow-up to that, we'll be creating a kindness rock garden where each student will be painting a rock and representing it with some kind of message of kindness. And we'll be using the courtyard as kind of an area to display that very soon. So all in all, great start to the year.
We had a great start here at Melikan as well. We welcomed 626 students, so it's exciting always to welcome our sixth graders. We had our orientation the week before, and it's always fun to see the sixth graders without everybody else in the building, getting to know each other, practicing opening their locks, and all of those things that are difficult for them. So then when they come in with the rest of the students, they always feel that much more comfortable. So that was exciting. Our steps program, our therapeutic program, that is funded by the Metro West Foundation, is off to a great start this year. We're very excited about the program. There was work done over the summer with the bright partnership that we have with that program, the bridging resilient youth in transition, so we're very excited about that. One student actually walked into the room and said, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe I get to go to this school, and this room is awesome!" So we must be doing something right, but it was just really neat. I happened to be in there when he did that, so it was really cool. So we're excited about that. We, I have to also thank Tom Mayler and his staff. We hosted summer programs here and the rec department until they went to you, so this building was full until the end of the summer, as it always is, but the custodians always managed to get the place looking like brand-new. There's fresh paint on all three floors now. The first floor was done in June, but it looks like a new building, and I'm just always amazed at the pride that they take in the building and the way they're able to get things ready, and how exciting it is to have a full building in the summer. It's just amazing. I have to also thank Kathy Loube. She's our administrative assistant who works all year round. She was in all summer, working on scheduling. We schedule students individually so that we can customize and get them what they need within the norm of our schedule, so she did a lot of work. Our late buses start next week, so we're excited. Our fall sports start, as well as our after-school activities, so that's exciting. We are also doing kindness rock garden, so we'll have to talk about that. So that's neat. Next week, we have our curriculum night on September 13th, and then we have an author coming who wrote the book for our All School One Read, Nora Raleigh-Baskin. She's going to be at the Northborough Free Library the 14th, and then she'll be here in school on the 15th to work with students around some of the themes in the book. So all in all, a great start to the year, and we're excited for the rest of the year.
And that's only after 40 years. And lots of good foreshadowing, and things to hear about as the year progresses. At this point, we'll transition from the building level to sort of the district perspective in terms of what's been going on district-wide, which embraces all of the activities that were mentioned by our principals in each individual school. And we'll start with Greg, Martineau, our Assistant Superintendent.
So as Principal Parsons mentioned, that learning does not stop for teachers over the summer. Teachers engage in professional learning throughout the summer, taking workshops, graduate classes, running partnerships, and they were very, very successful. So I'm looking forward to sharing a more detailed report for the upcoming school meeting. The technology team also did amazing work over the summer. They have a very short window to accomplish a tremendous amount of work. This work was led by Andy Mariotti, who is the District Technology Operations Manager. He's supported by Darren Austin, who is new. He's a systems administrator for Northborough. He was located at Albon and was shifted to Northborough this year, so he was a welcome addition. And we also have Galen Hammond, who is the structural technology support staff. And lastly, we have Thomas Karen, who I'm known as TJ, who is Assistant Technology Operations Manager, who helps support a lot of the projects. So they did amazing work, and here tonight to share a little bit more about the projects that took place is TJ, and he's representing the team. So TJ, if you want to give a quick update on some of the projects that took place over the summer.
Thank you, Greg. As you said, we had a great start to the school year as a technology team. As Greg said, a lot of work going on, very short window of time, working around what the custodians are doing and making sure that we have everything ready for the first day of school. One of the big projects that we had this summer was firewall installations. So at each school in the district, we switched over to a new system by Dell EMC, and this allows us to increase the security of every building, making sure that students don't accidentally go to websites that they shouldn't be going to, people aren't getting into our network that shouldn't be, things like that. One of our other big goals for this school year, purchasing, was being one-to-one mobile devices in grades three to eight, and one-to-one iPads in grades K to 2. I'm very excited to say that we have met both of those goals, in great part through the support that we received through Northborough, as well as NEF through the donations of the fundraiser that they had last year. One of the other things that we work on through the summer is we have a replacement cycle for all of our technology, teacher laptops, projectors, Apple TVs. One of our big goals for the summer was to try to stay on a consistent cycle, making sure that we're not keeping too much equipment longer than we should. So that work has been ongoing. We try to refresh that equipment every five to six years, and we continue to do that. And now, since we've launched the school year, one of our big projects is going to be beginning the planning for FY19, making sure that we're setting our goals based on the students' needs, and let the teachers communicate that they need to continue to teach the students with technology. So we're very excited for this year and a great start.
And I believe Marie Allen and Deb Newt, who's on Special Ed, in the audience, and also Sue O'Keefe, the Director of the Preschool Program, sharing some information in terms of how well the young and moved to the new facilities and new locations. A little bit about that.
As you know, our school year in Student Support Services does not end in June, so over the summer, we were very busy with bustling activity, and students were actively engaged in both social and academic learning. We had a transportation meeting in June for parents that were new to transportation, and it proved to be a very worthwhile effort. We partnered with Vanpool and with ABC Collaborative to give that presentation to the parents, and it really seemed to really impact the transportation issues because there were fewer over the summer. We'll certainly find out what the parents thought overall when they complete their surveys for this year, and we'll report back to you when we have the results of those surveys. So I think we'll start with our preschool opening, and Sue O'Keefe will give a brief update.
So the preschool programs of Northborough and Southborough had a wonderful start to the school year. As you know, in the spirit of two districts and one community of preschoolers, we welcomed many new Northborough families, as well as the preschool staff, to the Finn School in Southborough. We did that by doing two things. First of all, we had, for the first time, we had an open house at the end of the school year to welcome new families after we finished our final screening for the year, and it was really well-received. We had over 75 people. I didn't count how many families, but it was a really good turnout for our, just welcoming and getting to know the Finn School. And then, of course, we had our traditional opening, open house at the very beginning of school, and again, that was well-attended. We've had some very positive, some very positive experiences and positive, some positive feedback from families and from staff about the beginning of the school year. So we look forward this year to having all of our preschools together to roll out our new curriculum, which is called Connect for Learning, and we were fortunate enough to be able to purchase a kit for each classroom this year. And this particular program, it highlights and integrates math, science, literacy, and social-emotional learning all into, into one curriculum. So we're really excited to get going on it. The teachers attended a training over the summer, which was hosted by the Pearson Company, which we purchased the curriculum from, and there'll be ongoing workshops in curriculum throughout the year, curriculum workshops throughout the year. We're very excited that we're actually, we're starting the school year with an enrollment of 97 preschoolers, which is the highest enrollment that we've had since I can, since I've been here, actually, in Northborough and Southborough, so it's very exciting.
In addition, Deb and I were very busy the first day of school, running around to all the programs, and visited two launches of our new programs. One is the elementary school program, the therapeutic learning program at Lincoln Street School, and they were, the kids were, it was very well-attended, and the kids were running around doing activities and with smiles on their faces, and it was, and the teachers were engaged with the students, and it was a lot of fun. We also went to the Z-School to see our Language-Based Learning Disabilities Program for another open house, and another successful launch, very well-attended, and it was great. Other than that, we also visited all of the other programs in our various schools, and again, everybody seemed excited and ready to start the school year. I think our teams have all come back very energized and ready to begin, and we're ready to begin too, so good start.
I'd also like to add that we had a wonderful meeting with NSPAC over the summer, and very much looking forward to our ongoing collaboration, not only with our speaker series, but also supporting their goal, their goals in terms of providing education to the parent community, to all of our parents. And it was very exciting to have, I don't know, a wonderful summer morning discussing how we can improve our work together and continue to grow as a shared community of learners. We also spent considerable time trying to streamline our meeting schedules so that we are there to support one another as those opportunities present, to present themselves, and also had a great opportunity to meet the new NSPAC leadership team. So more to come, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more from NSPAC about the kinds of activities that they have planned. Very exciting agenda throughout this, the summer, the summer and the school year. And I believe we have our first coffee house next week, where we have committed to be present whenever there's a coffee house, just so if members or participants, attendees have questions, whether we're there for five minutes or 15 minutes, it's really just a way to support the great work that we do together. So I think it's going to be a fantastic year. And it's Tuesday at 10 o'clock in the Northborough Library. And our Human Resource Director is in the audience. She's been one very busy individual, and as we heard from our principals with the changes that have taken place in staffing, as we have each year, we're a very large district. You'll also see that as we move through the agenda, the number of transfers, hires, and whatnot that take place in two months.
Actually, the final number for Northborough, and I, like Jen, had to count a few times to make sure that the number was accurate, in terms of new hires in Northborough, there are 41 new hires over the summer. 14 of those were professionally licensed staff, and the remainder, well, you heard, there were three new cafeteria managers, as well as a new support personnel. So it was certainly a busy time and throw in a carpet to boot. We were bringing new people into the office with boxes all around them, but we made them feel welcome just the same. The other ongoing initiative we had this summer was we started to implement a web-based portal that is now currently being used at the schools, and Cheryl can certainly talk about her piece of it, but it does allow office staff to enter purchase orders and also to take attendance at the building level, which is something that had been done, really using Excel spreadsheets and sending them up on a bi-weekly basis, you know, and then it required additional input by central office staff. So rather than have all of these steps now, the office staff is entering the attendance in on a daily basis. We're approving it, so we have up-to-date information on absences. So if there are things, people that we need to reach out to, we're able to get to them much quicker, and it's also giving us real-time data. And our first test will really be this Friday when we run our first payroll and attendance, you know, after, after testing this for, I'd say, probably four straight days with the Tyler Technology folks. You know, we've been working out things with the office staff, but I think overall, once we get over the first initial weeks, I think everything is going to be smooth as silk. The next piece of that will be eventually rolling out a web portal to our employees, which we're very excited about. It will give them access to view their, their information, their deposit slips. It will give them the ability to make any changes to their withholdings that they would like to see. They'll also be able to view some of their personal data, see what we have on file for them in terms of their licensure, their education, and it will allow them to be a little bit more active. more active in terms of what they're able to do, like change direct deposits, and also to make changes to their addresses. We would have the final approval authority, but it does give them that ability to do that, and then it's just a matter of a click of a switch and it's approved. And again, it's eliminating that double entry that often happens where errors may occur. So we're excited to roll this out. It's been a long time in the works. We've been working on this, probably for six months now, and so it's nice to see it start to come to fruition.
And that's Rebecca Pellegrina. I would have to say, you know, one of the great things at Central is we have a lot of wow moments, and certainly greeting every new staff member that becomes part of our school community is one of them. And I have the unique opportunity to meet all of the new staff members and welcome them on behalf of all of us. And like we heard so often from the principals, the teacher, the students were elated and excited to be back, and wow, it's great to be in this, in this space. We hear that quite frequently from the folks that we invite in to become part of our school community. Throughout the summer, I've heard, I can't, I can't believe I'm going to be working in this district. And that's everyone in the room that brings about that comment. The students first and foremost, the parent community that continues to support the work that we do, which is ever-changing and challenging the school committee. They know all about us before they apply, and so many have said that they purposely apply to our district. And in fact, I interviewed someone last week who said, you know, I've, I've, I've been looking for this for years. I did an internship years ago, and I couldn't wait to come back, and now there's a fine, finally an opportunity. So that really speaks to the welcoming culture that we support, and again, just brings those joyful moments into the classroom because they bring that spirit and that energy to them as well. The other pieces, maybe not so exciting, the operational efficiency part, but that means that we can spend more time doing the things that we want to do by supporting the work at the building level. So a lot of good work, and thank you to the school secretaries who also endured the training to migrate over to this new process. And Cheryl?
Sure.
You've been busy with business, I guess.
We've been busy with business. I certainly think that facilities has been addressed, but I do have to add my thanks to, to Tom Maitler and all of the, all of the custodians at the buildings, and our student custodians. We do have a crew of student, high school student custodians that are assigned to each of the building, and they work just as hard as, as, as Mr. Maitler makes sure that they do, but they work just as hard as everybody else, and that's, that's great, but they did, they certainly accomplished a lot this summer. I think one of the biggest projects that is underway, of course, is the roof over to practice school, and we'll talk a little bit about that a little later in the agenda. But other than that, there were other individual projects at the schools that they were able to, to do along with everything else that needed to be done prior to the start of the school year. And then, of course, it's the business staff. You know, you think about, school ends, and, and the business staff starts to close out the school year, and at the same time, for one hand, they're closing out a school year, on the other hand, they're starting up a school year and keeping the two fiscal years straight and keeping, okay, this purchase order belongs to here, and this purchase order belongs to here, and this new, this staff is ending year, and this new staff is beginning year. It's, it's, it's a lot, and, and, but they, summer is probably one of our busiest times of the year, and, and they persevered, and our first payroll actually is tomorrow, so everybody, all of our staff are getting paid, and, and everything will be there. I was going to mention the purchase orders too, as I was listening to TJ talk about the technology and all of the, all of the things that have been purchased, all of that does flow through too, so that, that, purchase orders begin at the, at the building level, but they end up in our, in the business office and are actually processed through to the vendor, and then the invoicing and all of that. So it really, it's, summer is pretty incredible.
So that's just a little bit about what we all do between June and August. And we have someone else in the audience, I think we may, I may have not seen her come in. Rhoda!
She's out of your sight.
Right. I know we always anxiously await Rhoda's appearance around December when she gives us the snapshot shot of the EL student population, but she's here to bring us up to speed on what's been taking place in the summer.
So we had our summer school in, in August, and thank you to Sue Witten for housing us once again. Every year, we have a few more students, we're a total of seventy-one students this year, first grade through high school. It's an amazing community feeling of having everybody, what is in common is that everybody has another language coming together, and this year, our focus was the language of STEM, and, and how to have an academic conversation and sustain that academic conversation with evidence through hands-on experience and through challenges. We had a staff of ten teachers. Some students attended three weeks, other students attended two weeks in August. Under the leadership of Sandy Bunsick, our ELD teacher at Lincoln Street, she provided the overarching framework for our, what we designed for the summer for our children to experience. And it was very nice to see the children come every day with a smile because it is summer, and to see the students return day after day. Our field trip this year was to WPI, and we are really grateful to Ken Stafford, who is a teaching professor there and the director of their robotics lab center there, the passion for his, for the field, the way he had organized and welcomed all of us, grade one through twelve on campus, visiting the labs, and, and the students being able to hear some of the language that they'd been hearing in, in our classrooms was very amazing. So we all left, I think, with a sense of awe, and the little ones were just thrilled. Some got to, to drive some of the, the machines, which was pretty awesome. We also had two student volunteers from Algonquin, bilingual students, English, Spanish. So that is an amazing opportunity to bring in more of our students as volunteers. Recess time, which is a favorite time too, to see that sense of community of different ages, children who were there in the past years, getting reacquainted with friends, other students making new friends. Of course, everyone's going to end up at our, at our high school, but also to see teachers engaged, the little basketball games, and that sense of coming together in the summer and getting ready to start the school year, and everybody focusing on English. I also want to express what the parents said to us. We do a parent survey, and parents were really grateful for the program. Students also provide their, their feedback, and they love the hands-on challenges that they had to face as a team and to be able to talk about it. And I think one student especially, who was able to travel with her family to see the total solar eclipse, said that actually the favorite part of her summer was coming to our summer camp. I don't know that you can get a better compliment for that, and that just reflects, I think, the, the passion that the teachers had in organizing this program. So we're off to a wonderful start.
Thank you. Program Eclipse, the eclipse, small feet, I guess. I'd also like to add a thank you to Cheryl Lepre. This is the first year we launched our new back-to-school newsletter communication, and everyone in the community received our postcard, letting them know that that would be available August twenty-first, and we received some excellent feedback for those parents who have not had a chance to view the newsletter via constant contact. There is an embedded survey in the school calendar section. I would invite everyone to take a look at that survey and participate if they haven't had a chance to, to do so. It will provide us with information that we'll be taking a look at as we begin our conversations at the combined school committee level in terms of creating our school calendar for upcoming years. And so I would invite everyone to participate in that. And again, want to thank Cheryl Lepre for actually, in a very visual way, helping us to finally represent what does one central office with ten schools as one community look like. So that is our new logo that we have already started using, and I'm pretty pleased with that. So thank you to everyone, we're on to a great start. Thank you. Comments or feedback from community members?
I would just like to thank everyone, because as the saying goes, it takes a village to raise a child. But I haven't been into the buildings other than walking in today to the middle school, mentioned to Mrs. Scarb, the beautiful paint job, it just, the contrast with even the numerals and with a new paint job, I said, was that mosaic always there? And yes, it has been since two thousand and ten or eleven, and it just freshens everything up. It looks brand new. And just going through the few times that I've been back this summer, is going past all the different schools, this school, going past Z School, going past Beasley today, and Lincoln Street, it's always been very vibrant, you know, a lot of activity, kids have been out, I think, after school session, I think maybe in Lincoln Street, after school program, and, and it's just, it's very warm. I have such a sense of pride when I go around Northborough, and I think it goes from the bottom level to the top, and what happens inside is what you see that over bounds on the outside. So I'd like to thank everybody for, and all the staff members that are giving up your precious hours after your first week of teaching and being with the kids, and the administration staff for constantly, you know, being there, and all the wonderful things, hearing about, you know, the, the new learning program, Connect for Learning for the preschool, TJ talking about the technology, and knowing that we still have one-to-one, and I was going to say, if we have sixty-two new students, do we still have one-to-one for those students? And you're saying you're doing so. That shows all the planning and the dedication and looking forward and saying, how can we always be better? And talking to Maria about the program, she was saying, previous how the, the new busing program worked so much better this year than last year, and as I said to her, we always learn how we can be better. And I think this year, you and your staff have really shown it, and you said how seamless and how wonderful the transportation was for those students in the summertime. So I have a very sense of pride, my kids are not in this school district anymore, but I'm glad to be a taxpayer and a resident of Northborough, so thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Can we further our discussion from twenty minutes? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is under Old Business, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen School Committee Subcommittee and Liaison Assignments. It has been updated due to Cheryl Lepre's [inaudible] because we did discuss at our June meeting, so this is an updated version, the changes that we had discussed on here. It also added to the bottom, liaison to the Town of Northborough Master Plan Committee. The Town of Northborough is, is starting to form a master plan committee. If you look at their, on the town's website, there is a request for proposal, is this something that they might need? I'm just preparing ahead, I know there's going to be a committee that's not, this hasn't gone, the call hasn't gone out yet. I do, do think that they might be interested in having a school committee member on that, on that committee. We could discuss that tonight, or if you wanted to wait and add it once that committee is being formed, that, that's up to you, if you can discuss that. And if there are any other changes, if anyone else has any suggestions or changes, Mr. Kane, I don't think that you, were you here in June?
No.
So you might have been volunteered. Are there any changes that you'd like to mention?
The only thing is just on the Public Relations Communications Subcommittee, why don't we just eliminate it? We really don't have one that's going to NA there anyway, so why have another list?
I don't think that's going to be a problem. It might be a policy in regards to that. I will double-check before our next meeting, should there be nothing agree. And you'll notice that we did remove liaison to the Northborough two-fiftieth Committee since that is over now. Fine.
We'll do.
Okay. So let's bring this back while.
We do a next month and...
Do it next.
Time for reflection.
Yeah. One more question. Good. Thank you. Uh, update on the kindergarten feasibility study. Um, it's important, you're still on...
I'm still on that, yes.
Thank you for your volunteer work for that study group. Okay?
We do.
Okay.
We've actually met this summer more than once, and we've been meeting for probably a year and a half. As we know, each, each meeting, we make some reference to kindergarten because kindergarten is an essential part of the K-12 learning experience for all children. And this group was formed to explore the feasibility of moving from a tuition-based to a full free-day K model. And Sue Lawrence has been an active participant in this study group. We've had conversations with the principals at the committee level. We've had a number of parents, I think our first launch was at the Northborough Library, it was well-attended, and we determined at that point that this would be an opportunity for us to not only engage in a conversation about the feasibility of a free full-day model, or transitioning to, over a period of time, a free full-day model, but also to revisit the changes that have significantly taken place in the kindergarten curriculum over the last five or six years. And we continue to meet. The goal, of course, is to present to the school committee findings that we've had with respect to not only the curriculum changes, but also the short and the long-term opportunities of modifying the funding model. It's an opportunity to engage in this conversation before we begin to dig and to dip deeply into the FY nineteen budget, which is just around the corner, believe it or not. As Cheryl mentioned, we started to expend eighteen and starting to plan for nineteen. And so we will meet again on September twenty-fifth to fine-tune a PowerPoint presentation. And I think there are two members in the audience this evening that have been actively participating in this study group since it was formed about a year and a half ago. So the next meeting will include, again, an invitation to the kindergarten teachers and the Northborough principals to attend, and then fine-tune the presentation that we would like to propose to place on the agenda for our, our October meeting.
Thank you to all the members of that committee for volunteering their time and helping us with that proposal. We look forward to your presentation next month.
I think it's been going really well, and I think it's, I'm looking forward to the presentation in October and get a little bit better handle on it and present to the committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion from committee members?
Are we looking at other districts that, is there precedent for this?
Yes. As a matter of fact, we, a very close community to us, we're about a year behind that discussion, had visited this topic probably for three and a half years, and we are unique in that we presented a model of transition as opposed to all or nothing. In fact, received a phone call from a district that had read something about the work that we had done to at least begin to move in that direction, appreciating that we are and we always have first and foremost in mind being educationally sound and fiscally responsible, and to do a full transition in any year would have a significant budget impact. But to sort of make steps, to be mindful about moving in this direction and capitalizing on opportunities that they, that might present themselves through the funding process and the budgetary process, has yielded some positive results. I'm pleased at the conversations that are taking place in the group, in the study group, in that there's no expectation that it happened tomorrow, but there is a hope that the conversation begins today or next month. And so we did receive a call wondering how we were able to do this, and really was celebrated for the fact that we sort of took a novel approach to this, mostly because of the, you know, the mindful participation and the awareness that in any year, it would be significant to the budget. In, in Northborough alone, transitioning in any given year could be a three percent increase. So that's our total increase overall in the budget, and I think one of the things that's really delightful about the group that's coming together and having these kinds of conversations is we're digging very deeply into all of the possibilities, while still appreciating that kindergarten, we don't refer to any school district now as grade one through twelve. A district... is we're digging very deeply into all of the possibilities while still appreciating that kindergarten, we don't refer to any school district now as grade one through twelve. A district is referred to as K-12, and that really does support the notion that kindergarten is an essential part of the learning experience. I will note that the, the resources that come any district's way from the state or the federal government in support of kindergarten is basically zero. There was a grant, a small grant, that sunsetted about three years ago, two years ago in fall. It was trickling downward for a number of years. There's significant conversation at the state level about preschool. And there seems to be a gap in the conversation because there still are a number of districts, albeit a smaller number of districts, that charge tuition than not. It's something like two hundred and thirty-one to seventy at this point. It changes in terms of tuition versus non-tuition.
Charging for a half-day or for?
Full day. If you charge tuition, you provide a half-day model at no cost. That's part of the, the language of the kindergarten, language from the state. And if we did move eventually to a free full-day model completely, there would never be a half-day model. But as we know from our enrollment projections and our conversations, our half-day model and the number of parents who participated in the half-day program has significantly changed just from last year to this year. Where last year, we had enough to support a full-half-day program. This year, we had a very small handful of parents who chose the half-day option. So it does change. But if you were, we were to go in that direction and when we go completely in that direction, if ever, there would be no longer be a half-day model. It's exciting conversation, and we have, I think, a lot of information to share.
And we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Next one.
We as well.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report to the Committee. And in our packet, Sarah, the fiscal year seventeen budget, final budget?
Yes, this is the time where we do close out one budget cycle. And the final end of the year, General Fund Expenditure Report for FY seventeen is in your packet. This, of course, still awaits the auditing from our auditing firm. But again, it is here for your consideration. Again, masterful job by our business office in bringing us in at the bottom line and still doing all of the wonderful support for our schools and to the programs that you heard about today. So this is here.
Do we need a vote?
I think we need a vote to approve until audit.
We do.
It's good to have.
Okay. Do you want a motion?
I move that we approve the final fiscal year two thousand seventeen end-of-year general fund expenditure report dated June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Until audit.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All of your right.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. And before we move on to extending from the FY eighteen general fund report, I would like to share some information on enrollments. This is the second year of the districting policy. And I do have a lot of information to provide to in the form of an update. You do have in front of you.
Passed out this evening.
Yes, passed out this evening. We wanted to get the most timely information in front of you. So you have what is our typical monthly sharing of enrollment data, which is the actuals as of September first. And as Michelle pointed out, Malacan has opened with six hundred and twenty-six students. And K-five has opened with one thousand twenty students, bringing our total enrollment as of today to sixteen forty-six, slightly above our projection from last year of sixteen twenty-five. What this does not show, however, is how that number comes to be over the summer. And as we talked last year, and really one of the reasons why we wanted to move to some policy changes is really the change that takes place over the summer. So in June, we had a projection of nine hundred and eighty-eight K-five students. That was as of June twenty-second, I think, when we closed our doors. Over the summer, from June twenty-second until September first, we enrolled sixty-one students at the K-five level. We also, and always part of our concern, are those students who un-enroll. At the same time students are coming in, un-enrollment is taking place. So at the K-five level, we also had twenty-nine un-enrollments over the summer. Unfortunately, the information doesn't always come in at the same time and on any magic particular date. And so that means that over the summer and since February of last year, we have been keeping track, if you will, of those enrollments that were coming into our district. And much of this happens after the budget has already been approved, as was the case again this year. So taking into those, account those numbers, we were looking, and that's how we gather our one thousand twenty numbers. At the six to eight level, I know, remember from last year, we always talked about K-five. And then Michelle would say, don't, don't forget my sixty. Or what number was that, Michelle, last year?
A lot.
A lot.
It was a lot.
But in one year, a lot of things can change. And so as we look at Malacan's enrollment, the projected was six thirty-seven. Only five enrolled. We're happy that five enrolled, and we greet all students joyfully. And so that's a big change in one year, from significant numbers in one year to the next. And it is difficult oftentimes to project. If anyone looks at the, the real estate listings in Northborough right now, every house is either got a contingent on it or pending sale. And most of them have two to three bedrooms. And so I'm sure that our enrollments will continue to fluctuate to some extent. And so that brings Malacan's total to six hundred and twenty-six students. We closed with a projection of sixteen twenty-five. Case, K-eight, we un-enrolled forty-five, and we enrolled sixty-six, most of it, if not all, at the K-five level. And that brings us to our sixteen forty-six. Oftentimes, we're asked, well, how valid is Nezdek in terms of their projections? So I did a little bit of analysis and was quite surprised to find that we are fourteen below Nezdek's projection. I know, I'm surprised too. I'm trying to read Mr. Kane's face.
The sixteen forty-six is fourteen below.
Is fourteen below Nezdek's projection of sixteen sixty. We are a district that tracks that at least this year because it changes from year to year fairly closely, which was quite a surprise. We mentioned preschool earlier. I have not added preschool to the enrollment numbers, and you'll see a little bit of a footnote there that has removed the number of preschool students from the total. But we have made sure that we've broken that number out. That number is significantly higher than, than last year's enrollment. Last year's enrollment was thirty-five students at preschool level.
For just Northborough?
Yes, these are just Northborough.
And thirty-five last year. And this year, right now?
We have fifty-eight. So again, I know we talked a lot about that and certainly valued the concerns that were expressed when we talked about the transition. But I think what we had hoped would happen has happened, and that is allowing for the transition to take place. Our parents have been able to take advantage of not only a five-day model for preschool students, which was not otherwise available with just one staff member and small numbers, but also, you know, the collaboration around some of the professional development and program development by maximizing resources and also after-school extended programming for students. So we are hearing, except for a little traffic on Route Nine, it's been a good, a good transition. And Sue O'Keefe had spoken about that a little bit. So that's a snapshot of our numbers. Also did an analysis around what would have happened if we had not moved to, to redistrict this year. And so I have some information that I wanna share with you as well, and I do, I can pass this out. Again, you'll probably feel the warmth of the photocopier as well on this document. But I'll share it, and I'll speak very specifically to that. So we took a look at the numbers of students that enrolled because we, quite frankly, didn't have the enrollment statistics coming in at the same time we were enrolling students. So when we look at where we are with our school, our opening of school at this point, we are, for the most part, in kindergarten under our recommended cap. It's a recommended cap, allowing for flexibility with siblings and so forth to be placed in the same school. In grade one, we are at the recommended or below. In grade two, we are slightly above in each of our four schools. We could, this year was all about second grade. For some, for some reason, second graders were coming in everywhere. And it was a unique grade to see a spike in enrollment. Another situation that was unique was that in the past, not just because of last year's focus on the numbers, generally, we'd have a family moving in with a student at the K-five level and a student at Malacan, which might have accounted for Malacan's increase last year. This year, if families were coming in with multiple students, they tended to both be at the K-five level. So again, we do track some of this information. So that was a, a unique situation. In grade three, we are, for the most part, at or by one student in certain sections above. But again, there's equity of distribution of students across the grade. So what we're not seeing is the spike in a higher numbers and lower numbers in some of our schools, which was our ultimate goal. In fourth grade, we're below cap and recommended. And fifth grade, we're, we're at or below. Third grade, actually, I apologize, it's twenty-two, and so we're, we're actually below that in, in all of our sections. So grade two was an interesting spike. I will also say that these numbers include any students who are part of our specialized program. So those numbers reflect that. And the distribution and the ratios do not reflect any factoring in of special educators. So these are just classroom teachers. So we know last year from the conversations that the specialized programs that we have started, that we've launched this year, also provide, for the most part, one-on-one supports to the students who may be then joining the typical classroom. So that's the distribution of students. What is interesting this year at the K-five level, we know our policy suggests that we place siblings together. We had ten sets of siblings, and one set tripled. So we had, you know, twenty students that were basically, needed to be placed in the same K-five building, which creates some exciting opportunities for discussion. In FY two thousand eighteen, this year, and now we have two years of tracking this policy change, which is informative. We had sixty-one students all totaled. Half of that number were actually placed in their neighborhood schools. So thirty-one of those students, we were able to place in their neighborhood schools. Thirty students were redistrict. Twenty-one of those students were redistrict to Peaslee. Why? Peaslee has several classrooms with three teachers. And that was a purposeful decision on our part through many discussions last year. And in fact, in June, we added a second-grade teacher.
First and second.
First and second. Yeah. Third, a third teacher.
And just to note, part of the placement is also bus route, so north and south are just how to accommodate the kids to go to a school. It's, it's capacity and bus.
Challenging.
Challenging.
Yes. Five students were redistrict to Proctor, two students redistricted, redistricted to Z. These numbers don't reflect kindergarten students, and I think the two students at Z were kindergarten students. And then two students were redistrict to Lincoln Street. So overall, that was how we came about the redistricting totals. Last year, we had half, we had fifty-three students that were enrolled. Thirty-five were redistrict. Thirty-five were placed in their neighborhood schools, excuse me, and eighteen students were redistrict. So what we're seeing is, you know, capacity. So as we begin our budget discussions, which will be in just two short months, all of this data will be very helpful in us developing a staffing model for next year. And then again, the specialized programs are not reflected in the above numbers.
Just a quick question. Of the, going back to the two thousand seventeen cohort that were redistricted, those eighteen that were redistricted, how many of them then had an opportunity to return to what would have been their neighborhood school? And did they either, again, just talking numbers, did they go back to the neighborhood school, or did they stay in the new school that they had been redistricted to?
So that's a great question because right before this meeting, we actually had a meeting in principal's office. We weren't called to the principal's office, we chose to be there. And that was exactly one of our conversations. Because I think what it is indicative of is that regardless of the elementary school that students attend, they experience a very rich supportive learning environment. And over the last six years, we have done amazing work to ensure that our curriculum and our resources, we heard that we were one-to-one, not in one school, not in two school, but in all of our schools, that there is equity of resources, there is consistency of programming. And while there may be pandas, polar bears.
Zebras.
Not, yes, I know. And I look at this card now. Polar bears, road runners, zebras, and pandas.
Penguins.
Penguins, penguins, penguins. I have this as a cue card now. The experience is phenomenal. And why do I say that and know it's validated? Because last year, when the parents had an opportunity to return to their neighborhood school, which we asked in January, the letter goes out, phone calls are placed because we need to start staffing models. I think one or two students chose to return to their neighborhood school, which I think speaks incredibly positively about the experience that they have in any one of our schools.
Well, it speaks to, it's not necessarily the buildings, the community.
It's the community.
So it's that experience that is the bar.
The whole, the building doesn't make a school.
So that means of the thirty, there's sixteen or seventeen of those thirty redistricted are ones from previous years that chose not to. So it's of new ones. So there were sixteen or seventeen that have been redistricted that chose to stay. And so now we're talking only thirteen students for this year.
No. Last year, of the eighteen students that were redistrict in two thousand seventeen, they have, everyone, according to policy, has an option, and it's in January, to either stay in the school where their children are enrolled or to return to their neighborhood school. Of that number, sixteen remain. So the whole notion of whether they're redistricting goes away because they have an option to stay so that we no longer refer to them as being redistrict because they chose to stay. So this year, we have thirty. And we will, again, reach out to all those families in January because their responses will help drive our staffing conversations. Because once they indicate they're staying in their schools, just like we did last year, they're counted in those numbers.
Okay.
So.
Does the thirty include kindergartners as well?
No.
And are there redistricted kindergartners?
Yes, I'm sorry, they do. Yes, they do. I didn't include kindergarten in this analysis.
But is the bottom in the footnote, the thirty does include?
Mm-hmm. I can actually tell you how many kindergarten students were part of that. Let me, um, this, it looks like Spamoni ice cream, but it's actually how we track our students. Every color has a, has a purpose. So we had one, two, three kindergarten students that are part of that number in redistrict, mostly because of a sibling effect. So the sibling might have needed to go into another school, and the kindergarten student chose to go as well. But it, that number is part of the sixty-one. The three kindergarten students is part of the sixty-one. That's a lot of information, but I think it's important to share with everyone the process, the outcome of the work.
And just, again, to kind of summarize what the economic, what the financial impact would be on this sheet that is hot off the crux that we just got, where we have a red mark right here. If we did not have the policy in place. If we did not have the policy in place, where in order to adhere to the guidelines and staffing in terms of the student ratios, we would need to add a teacher for each one of these, correct?
We would have had interesting conversations, which possibly could have led to a teacher.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine times fifty thousand dollars per is a significant budgetary impact. So that's a good policy that we're here. It's definitely fiscally sound, fiscally responsible, educationally sound, yes.
And I think, you know, the educationally sound piece of that is I'm encouraged by, I think the most encouraging piece, that for the students, this is working, albeit maybe uncomfortable in the beginning, is the response that the parents provided in January when we asked, would you like to return? Which is following our commitment by policy. It does not come without difficult conversations. I have to applaud Nancy Bissett. She is amazing. The conversations that she has had, and the way that she's continued to support new families as they move into the district, and have those, you know, challenging conversations with them, has been masterful, and caring, and responsive. And it's not one conversation, it's many conversations. Over the summer, we have kept the principals in the loop, and always sharing information, and making sure we're checking rosters. So I know this policy's changed, but No Child Left Behind still comes into play in terms of this conversation. And we've gone through student by student by student and roster, by comparing rosters. The building secretaries have been phenomenal. And again, one of the things that's helped at the building levels is imagining, imagine enrolling sixty-one students pretty much the day we open, because our schools are not open in the summer in terms of the offices. A little bit more time was provided through the budget last year. They're not open to take and to greet new parents into the community. And that's why central office is taking it on, so they have someone they can actually engage in a conversation with. And so the sixty-one enrollments, when you're opening your doors, is an incredible disruptive, welcomed but disruptive experience. And so what we're able to do is hand them the folders and say, what matters most is welcoming the families to their schools. And so that's really helped.
And the other question that I have is, of the thirty-one that were ultimately placed in their neighborhood schools, how many of them were on the waitlist to begin with and then transitioned? So they had to wait, but then were notified that they were eligible to go to the neighborhood school and then chose to?
So that, that's an interesting question answered two ways, actually. If they made this list, they were waiting.
Okay.
And so what we did was follow through with our commitment. In June of last year, we did communicate out some specific dates. And we indicated a date by which we would contact all parents who were on this list as to where they would be assigned. And that was completed on the date that we proposed, which I believe was August ninth. The letter went out, there's a copy of it, and Nancy placed phone calls as well. That date, again, to a parent, it was later than they would like. But as we mentioned, the number of changes that occur when others are on vacation is amazing. And so actually, I would love to be able to wait until the week before school opens, when the picture is clearer. But we appreciate that parents are looking for notice. After we gave the initial assignments to the families, we asked them if they still wanted to be on another waitlist. So if we had people who were unenrolling, and we became aware of that, would they like to be contacted? We were able to move some folks up, and we do reach out and contact them. We have the time they came to central office, we have the date, and much like school choice, and that's the same process. We go by date and time and grade. And we were able to reach back out to these families. Friday is the deadline by which any waitlist movement will take place. Beyond that, it's very difficult, the kids have been in their, have been in their classroom for, you know, a week plus. So on Friday, we will be looking very closely at this list, continuing to monitor the unenrollments. We called a couple people today on the waitlist and said, would you, would you like to move back to the neighborhood school? And they said, no, we want to stay where we are. And that's in spite of, you know, not being in the neighborhood school. And again, I mentioned we had some challenges with the buses, and still, you know, electing to stay. It, it's, it is a very difficult conversation at times with families. And again, I would say, nothing is perfect. There were some uncomfortable conversations, but overall, I think it went well. And with two years of data, I actually think it provides us with some information that we'll revisit when we have our budget conversations around staffing.
I just wanted to commend the whole process, it's two years of a lot of hard work, and I just want to say thank you to all the administration, working so hard on this policy that really illustrates that our, the importance of the class size ratios in neighborhood schools that are so important to North Barrow. And I just want to just let you know, we really appreciate all your hard work.
We appreciate the understanding of, of the community in general, and the support of the school commanders. And again, Nancy Bissett, she's a, she's the queen of reef, of Spremoni lists at this point, I think. She's a, and again, I want to thank the parents for being, understanding of the process and the value in putting this in place.
Tagging on to this, as we go throughout this school year, we're going to get new enrollments. So if you could keep us just abreast, you know, as this is happening, because, you know, someone was mentioning, I think it was you who mentioned that, you know, the number of homes that are under contract, and like you say, three bedrooms, there's going to be, you know, kids coming into that home. So if you could just keep us abreast of how the numbers, because this same policy would follow with all those new students coming in as you had in the summertime, correct?
Right, and so this actually came up last year, and I don't think it was actually something that was part of our initial conversation. But if a family were to move in in November, they will still be sent to the school where they're enrolled. So just because this, you know, back to the school focus on the process is no longer present, the notion of what the policy stands for and the purpose of why the policy was created to begin with follows through, throughout the year. And we were also just having a conversation about what that might look like. So on Friday, we turned back the enrollment process to the schools. And look at them smile, they're so happy to have them. Joe, there's a first smile there, saying, yes, bring those folders back to us. And so what we also realize is because this is still in play, this whole process, that if a new student enrolls at any one of the schools, except for Malekhan, they will be contacting us and reconnecting with this list. Because we also want to make sure that we're, we're being true to our own process. And, and not placing someone who, because there's been an unenrollment after the unenrollment date by which people could move, so let's say Friday, a month from now, three people unenroll from Peaslee, and, and someone moves in. We have to appreciate the fact that there were folks in the neighborhood who were on that waitlist. And so we'd still keep that dialogue open, because I think that, that is about integrity of the process.
And I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but you talked about busing challenges. And we're not even into a whole full week of school, you know, even this week is only four days. How is the bus in McLean? Are the buses getting to the schools on time, or picking the kids up on time, or there's, is there some?
We have a couple of outliers that we are still working on diligently.
Okay. Luckily, it doesn't, because I noticed that there, the street in front of, by, right by the middle school here is this, they're going to, it's going to be, you know, non-driveable to mark because of paving, and I just like.
I anticipated them letting the buses through.
Okay.
They would have notified us if they were not letting us.
Okay.
Just when you think it's on time, they pave the streets.
Yes, or a bridge, you know, something gets closed or something like that, though. And that's always.
When a road is closed, they are very good about notifying us.
And, and I know it takes some time to get that to be worked out, because you haven't had even a full week.
It's all about the address.
All about the address, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion on September twenty-seventh, enrollments? Moving on, next item on the agenda, fiscal year eighteen, monthly general fund expenditure report. I believe we need a motion.
We do. To approve until audit.
To move that we approve the monthly general fund expenditure report dated August thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, until audit, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is capital projects and improvements update. There was only one, correct?
There is, but before we have a snapshot about the Proctor roof, the town administrator, Dr. Pierre, has reached out to me to engage in a conversation about the capital projects that will be proposed for funding in FY nineteen. And as such, we'd like to expedite the conversation, which generally doesn't happen until we're in the middle of the budget season. So I'm going to be asking for the capital subcommittee to meet sooner than we would in any other year. And I'll be sending out a little poll for that. I did commit to try to move us along in September. We do have a couple things on our capital plan, and generally, the subcommittee meets before we bring that back to the school committee. So if we do, if we are able to meet in September, then we can certainly have a, an item on the agenda in October.
Okay, okay, that would be great.
And now, on the roof, up on the roof.
Okay. We did have a bit of a slower start than we would have liked, I will say that on the onset. Our initial bid process did not result in as competitive a bid as we would have liked, so we did go back out to do it a second time. And the second time, we did make an award to Meetingway Construction, and they, a headquarters in Brockton, Mass. They were a little bit, and, and came with excellent, excellent references in previous work within schools. We had a kickoff meeting, I'm going to say, I'm trying to think of the date, I'm going to say three weeks ago.
I was going to say that's about right.
Yeah, yeah, of course, we had the kickoff meeting, and they were actually up on the roof at the same time, but but we weren't on the roof, but they were. So that was just three weeks ago, but they immediately began demolition. So that they were very, they caused intensive demolition and any noise that that may have caused, so they wanted to get that completely done prior to the start of school, and they were successful in that. And right now, they are on the, the roof is divided into three sections, two pods, and then over the cafeteria gym area. And they're probably half.
They're on the upper, the back side, the upper wing sides. They completed the lower wing side where the kindergarten rooms are. They completed that over the weekend. They've been coming in and working on the weekends to minimize impact, and they moved right over to that side. So obviously, with the rain today, they weren't present. But I can say that the kindergarten side, there are no leaks, which we were very grateful for. So the rain today, the torrential rain, was a true test, and it looks beautiful. Really nice color. They, they've been wonderful to work with, they give us daily updates. I just a big kudos, and, you know, being very thankful and grateful to our students and staff for just being able to be flexible and navigate a different way around the building, or a different way out to recess. The kids have been just great about that, and so have the teachers. And day to day, we just make a plan, and they give us an update, we make adjustments, and they anticipate being on that front part sometime next week.
So what do they plan on wrapping up by?
They say.
If everything's good.
Yeah, everything with no rain delays and everything, it should be in the next week and a half to two weeks.
Yeah, I was going to say two, two and a half weeks, so yeah.
Yep, yep, they've been absolutely wonderful. They, you know, communicate a lot, sharing plans, what they're going to do. So I can't say enough good things about them.
And will it come in at budget?
It is, it is coming in under budget.
Beautiful.
At budget, under budget, yeah. Which was the purpose of, yes, yes, it was worth the wait.
I must say, it looks sharp on my daily walks when I walk by every day.
Well, the, the metal roof is just beautiful, because it's quite a change from the shingles.
Yes, it really does.
It's really sharp.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, there have been comments from other neighbors too, that have really said that it really.
It does enhance the neighborhood.
It really does make a big difference. That's great.
Mrs. LaValle deserves all the credit for the color.
Picking that color, huh?
Excellent taste. She's our go-to for any paint colors, and she was the deciding factor for the roof, so.
After we saw the demolition, we were debating in our house, we're taking a poll, it's like, what color is it going to be? It looks really, really good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the capital project? And we'll move right on to fiscal year nineteen budget goals.
Yes, the budget goals for FY nineteen may look familiar, because they're actually FY eighteen's moved forward, because we're well under the way of expending the budget based on our goals of last year. And at this point, this evening, we just generally share this out. What I would like to do is do as we did last year, which is have a conversation also with the building principals around the kinds of things that they're looking for that may not be regular line item kinds of funding that's part of the expenditure report, or the appropriated budget. You know, just this evening, we mentioned a couple things in the conversations. Michelle had mentioned the great program that's been supported through the Metro West grant. We know grants are wonderful when they arrive, but they're uncomfortable when they run out, and most grants have sunset provisions. And so we talked about three programs that we've really spent a lot of time investing, conversation, and committed to professional staff, and certainly sharing out with the, with our parents the kinds of programming that we're providing now for, for all students. And we have the L D D program, we have the therapeutic program, and then the STEPS program funded by a grant. And so it's important for us to consider, in our funding cycle, that for these programs to have a life, we need to commit to them through the operational budget. And that grant money, I think, was a two-year grant, or three-year. So we're not going to be able to fund all of it probably in one year. So to, again, do what we do well, which is be thoughtful and mindful of how many years we need to transition that fund into the budget, so that we can, in any given year, address all of the needs. And, and maybe that will take three years. That's also true with a lot of our grants, we do receive a significant amount of money from grants and our staff. We have significant staff on our grants. And grants are federal and state. There, there's my statement right there. And, you know, it's here today and it could go tomorrow. So as we look at building our budgets, we really want to, I think, begin our conversations about how can we transition more critical staff onto operational, whenever we have a funding opportunity to do that. We also talked about, and we're very pleased, that we are at one-to-one with our technology. And we want to be mindful of ensuring that we're able to sustain that by providing the necessary funds to continue to revitalize that technology. And so that's an important conversation as well, as we think about our budget. So while not suggesting they become budget goals, there are definitely things that have potential to be included in some of our language for next year.
So I propose that we all review this, and then when we meet again, I'm sure it'll be an agenda item again next month. And if you could keep this just the way it is, but we can work on suggestions for, you can provide us with suggestions from your, your staff for changes, and our committee members can also bring their suggestions with them to next month's meeting, and we can discuss again.
I do have to share that through many budget conversations with a number of superintendents, the fact that we have these budget goals that help support and engage us in, in active dialogue around focused initiatives that we're trying to fund is not something that's present everywhere. And whenever I've shared that we have these budget goals as a part of our, an active dialogue, whenever we are presenting the budget, it was, wow, that must be great. Which I respond, yes, it is. So it's, it's, it is very special that we do that here in the district.
It helps us too, because when we had discussion about our capital projects, it helped us as committee members to go back to our budget goals and remind ourselves that we have the budget goal of maintaining, to maintain the district's capital assets with special emphasis on safety and up-to-date energy efficiencies. And a roof is certainly something that is needed for safety and helps with energy efficiency, so. So, and it definitely helps us. Any further discussion from committee members on fiscal year 19 goals? And we will revisit this agenda item next month, and we'll move on tonight to the fiscal year 19 budget calendar.
Yes, to be revisited often. Every, every meeting, I'm sure, we'll be adding some dates and modifying some discussions. I did put from September to October.
Hey, look at that meeting with capital planning subcommittee. So you have it as an October.
September, October.
September, October.
I think you might notice slight change. We use month spans instead of each month, because so many of these conversations are multiple-month conversations, particularly when we bring them back to the school committee mem, meeting for another conversation. So these are in ranges, but certainly this changes every meeting. But it's, we're ready to launch.
I think this is our calendar. Any comments or discussion from school committee members on the calendar for the fiscal year 19 budget? And there is no educational policy. Policy subcommittee meetings and status. We had a busy summer.
So actually, policy subcommittee did meet, and we have our dates mapped out for the rest of the year, actually, and we're meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 at Central Office for our second policy meeting. And we look forward to updating, reviewing, revising, and creating policy this year. And I think we have two more dates after that, November and March.
So September is, September 7th. Your date for November?
Is November 16th. And the date for March? March 8th, 2018.
I feel like I'm not getting those communications.
I don't recall receiving those dates either. I just wait that way.
I think it was just mentioned in the subcommittee.
It was mentioned by the committee.
Yeah, we just had the first subcommittee meeting in August.
Yes, August, September.
Yeah, and then it just hasn't been disseminated.
These are the dates.
It just hasn't been, yeah.
Are they always, are they always meeting at 8:30? Of the members who were present in August, we sort of had a fairly in-depth conversation that this seemed to be a good time. However, it's the will of the subcommittee as to whether or not they would like to change the dates. I think we remain flexible.
And we could do it if night or some other time on the 16th works better. I mean, again, we're very flexible.
Right.
The time table date is more, nail them down.
Yeah, nail them down the dates and keeping the time flexible depending on what the subcommittee's availability is.
So we have dates of November 16th.
March 8th.
Tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was that one, tomorrow, September 7th. And then November 16th, and then
March 8th.
8th, 2018. Okay. And then the times are tentative at 8:30 a.m., but those are subject to change.
And all of those will be at Central Office.
Yes. And if these dates, if, if I'm hearing, these dates might need to be modified, I can certainly take that information today and send out a doole poll based on what other times the subcommittee may wish to have included on the doole poll. So if we would like to send one out for the 16th and the 8th with some different times on there that work best for the committee, I can send that out and get that circulated.
And in accordance with open meeting, I'm sure tomorrow's 8:30.
Obviously, it is. We have about 12 meetings posted. Our whiteboard is full.
All right. So there is update on poli, is there, are we looking forward to, oh, there's a meeting tomorrow, so we can't
There's a meeting tomorrow. We basically, the August meeting, just to, for, we were there. We basically looked at all the, all the policies, and we're basically taking some of the older policies, and we're taking a fresh look at those. So to try to get, we have stuff that goes back to literally the 60s and 70s that hasn't been looked at in a while. Some that will be discussed at combined meetings that hit all three districts.
Combined policy.
Combined policy. There will be some that are state law, you know, stuff that's, that's coming down from the state, coming down from the federal, that will have to be discussed in combined session anyways. So we're kind of leaving those, and we're just focusing on the upper K8 with this. And so it's refreshing a lot of the stuff that, that's older and kind of aged, just even if it doesn't get changed much in terms of content, just to say that it's been reviewed and renewed, as it were, with a new date. Most of it is fairly current within the last three to five years. And it's just, I mean, we're dealing with 10 to 15 that, let's put it this way, we're gonna be moving some policies through this year, guaranteed. It'll be like 10 to 15 that we'll all have some input on and some consideration. And again, we'll get more current with what our policies are in the district.
Well, my thanks to everyone working on those policies, on the policy development. And I look forward to another update at our October meeting. Any, any further discussion on policy development? Okay. So we move on to audience sharing, our audience sharing, and I will turn to our audience this evening. Come on up. Just to let you know, the microphone is not really, well, there is some amplification, but it's primarily for the folks at home.
So in regards to the
I'm sorry, your, your name?
Oh, Christine Lyons. I have kids at Proctor.
Okay, welcome.
Including a second grader. And so my questions, my comments are in regards to the class size of the second grade and why a, because we have our redistricting policy that allows for the flexibility of potentially putting all the new students at the same school, why an extra second grade class wasn't added over the summer to keep this class size within guidelines?
So our audience sharing, just as I refresh our, our audience sharing is not a public hearing.
Okay.
It's, it's an opportunity for members to come to share with us.
Okay.
But Superintendent Johnson, if you'd like to, so committee members, because of our town charter and of state laws, if it's, we're not allowed to address directly, so don't, don't feel that we are, we're not, it's not that we're trying to deviate, but we, we can go through the superintendent for that, and certainly if you two wanted to discuss at another time, I'm, I'm sure she would be willing to meet with you.
So I guess then my, I guess I can rephrase my comments in that, in that sense of, that I understand that our redistricting policy, you know, as with every policy, has pros and cons, and we talked about the busing challenges and the difficult discussions with the new students coming in. And in my mind, the advantage of the policy is that we, it allows the community more flexibility. As, you know, as you pointed out, that if we didn't have the redistricting policy, we would have many classes over guidelines. And it feels to me that we did not take advantage of the benefits that this policy could have afforded us by appropriately, by potentially, by adding one teacher. We could have kept all of our classes throughout the district within guidelines. And I, I don't know that if the budgeting, you know, plays a factor in that and how we are appropriately budgeting for next year to, to address that, those challenges. And I don't know, I guess I can't ask questions, so I, is the intent of the audience sharing to just share my comments or to facilitate discussion or?
So your concerns that you're sharing with us is that your class, that you've noticed that your class size is for second grade is outside of our policy?
Yes.
So our policy for second grade is for?
The recommended range for second grade is 20.
20.
20. And third grade is 22.
And third grade would be 22, right. And there is a class at Lincoln Street that you're concerned about with a, with a class size of 23?
No, well, I, I didn't get that handout, so I'm not sure of all the classes. I know in particular, there's one class at Proctor that's 22. And my understanding is that because of our redistricting policy, we were able to at least keep all of the classes similar, so I'm assuming that the other classes are of a similar size, in which case, if you had added a class, they would all still be within guidelines. Of course, if we didn't have our redistricting policy, we wouldn't be able to address that because we would have extremely small classes, but because of the redistricting policy, we could have kept them all within guidelines.
I mean, I don't believe that would be true. I think that if we had added an extra teacher, then we would be below our guidelines.
So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but are they, how many? Yeah, I'm, I think this is close to what I had guessed it was, and I think it probably would be about 19 kids per class if we added.
So certainly, our enrollments will be on the agenda for next month, and we can revisit these class size numbers again. And, you know, I myself would do, I'll do the calculations as well to see if, like, what you're stating is true, that if you, leave if we added one more teacher, that we would, that it's a very difficult, we're, at 22, we're not, 22 or 23, we're really not that much outside of the range, it's only a recommended range.
Yes, but we're 22 in nine classes, so that's, you know, 18 children over guidelines. So to me, if we didn't have a redistricting policy
I don't think it would be nine, because
There's nine classes of second grade.
But not all of them would be at 22.
There, it looks like they're all either 21 or 22.
This, that.
So to your point, I, I don't, I'm just gonna talk.
We appreciate you sharing the same.
So that's what superintendents do, I guess. So to your point, you're, you're correct. When I added up the numbers just now, we have nine teachers. And if we had 10, in, in a perfect world, if we had 10, that would be 19.7, so the class sizes would be in some schools 20 and some 19, depending on how it's distributed. I will say that there was distinct advantage to the redistricting, because we aren't looking at class sizes of 25, 25, and in the other school at grade two, 20, definitely 21 and a half. So we, we did have some, some reduction in what the cap would have been, given what our staffing model was for the budget in FY18. As I pointed out earlier, this is such a moving target. And so I will share with you that as grade two moves up to what is slightly above recommended class size, and I want to keep emphasizing the term recommended, and I also want to add and restate of something that I had said earlier, which is we have a number of specialized programs where for the most part, if a child is in a classroom, they're not in all day, and generally speaking, there's an aide or some support systems that are in there. Those students are reflected in these numbers, right? If I were to take the special ed population of teachers, which we never do, and add them to these ratios, those ratios would significantly drop as well. So there are other variables that actually do offset that, but you're right about your, your point. Unfortunately, those numbers don't all present themselves at once. And one of the things that we try to be very watchful over is those numbers as they increase. As they increased, we continue to have conversations with the building administration, and it gets to a point of close to opening school as these numbers move forward. And the discussion then begins, are we able to fully provide a rich educational experience for one more student in a class or two more students in a class? Or are we now within a week of school? Because you, I explained earlier the number of enrollments, the students that came in, and your grade two was it for some reason. Everyone, we tried to track it back, and we just can't figure out what. Why grade two? Is it less disruptive to add us one more to that recommended, not mandated, recommended range? Or is it more disruptive to now disaggregate that total population of students? Because there's no guarantee it would have been Proctor, because of the distribution of the students as they came in to enroll, and then have all of those students somehow disrupted? Because we're taking that total aggregate number, adding a teacher. That aggregate number of students is distributed over four schools.
Well, if they're all new students, then they could have all been redistricted to the same school.
They could have been if they, if all that information might have come in at the same time. However, we also get involved in a conversation about spacing. We had talked about spacing and what-ifs. We did some what-if scenarios at the beginning of the summer, fully appreciating that it could change, and we could have seen 25s and 26s. And if we hadn't, we would have seen 25s and 26s. And, okay, so where are we gonna place all those students? And so it came down to an educational decision about, at that point, what I respect is the input of the educators around how are we best serving the students versus, versus disrupting that school community with one or two students more in the classroom. And that was, that was the, the decision that was made, and I think it was the right decision at this point.
And I, and I fully understand
But you're, you're spot on.
All the moving pieces. You know, as far as spacing, I mean, I did notice that we were down four teachers just due to the lower enrollment compared to the previous year. It looked like the budget, the classroom, it looked like the classrooms, just because there's fewer students, which certainly makes sense. But even going into the year, it looked like the first and second grade, even with the projections, were very close to 20 students per class. So when the initial budget was set, you know, it seems that the, the, maybe we're, we're erring on the side of conserv, being conservative and being fiscally responsible by not budgeting extra teachers that it doesn't appear that we need, but yet we could have budgeted an extra teacher for first and second grade. And even if we didn't have the extra enrollment, we still would have been within guidelines. So it seems that we were sort of targeting that higher end of the range, and by doing that, it leaves us less flexibility for different enrollment. And, you know, I don't come from an education background, so a lot of this discussion about technology and different approaches, you know, class size is really the only thing that I, you know, I can really hang my hat on and recognize that there's, you know, a distinct benefit to every student in the classroom of, of smaller class sizes. So it, you know, I think the policies that we have of giving class assignments at the end of August and redistricting new students, while they come with their challenges, are giving us this flexibility to really focus on class size. And I'm, I'm just hoping that as we do the budget next year, it seems that it's kind of a theme in Northborough that we seem to be gaining more students during the summer than we lose each year, and that, you know, hopefully as we do the budget next year, we maybe, you know, can budget in that extra teacher, even if we don't think we need it, just to hopefully, because we assume, we can sort of guess that it, one of the grades is gonna end up.
Right. You're absolutely right, and I, I absolutely appreciate, appreciate your comments. We are certainly gonna take those into consideration, but I do want to share one, one point. We, we are concerned not just about the fiscal responsibility, but the educational experience, and that is why we did have a budget for a teacher, and that's why we added a third teacher to Peaslee. Because we saw early on that that number was increasing, and that additional staff member did allow us to sort of embrace those new, those new students, and still, as closely as possible, stay within our recommended range. And so as we look at the sheet that you now have, and I apologize that you did not have that
Oh, that's okay.
Compared to previous years, while not perfect, the, the dramatic spikes, highs and lows, was also a problem. So we, we may not have it exactly right, but we're moving towards, I think, a better distribution of equity of enrollments across the schools. And your point is well taken about preparing for this budget cycle. We also had that, we had a lot of conversations before this meeting. And that two-year sort of snapshot of what's happened is really going to be very helpful to us. So I, I really appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate that you see that we're trying to do good things with, with this policy.
Thank you very much.
And call me anytime.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Believe me, they, they are heard, and we very much appreciate you coming forward to share that with us. And it will be something that is, very good points, and we'll take that into consideration. And it will be something that is, very good points, and we'll take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
If come to future meetings, we discuss enrollments at every single meeting.
Yeah, this is, I, I'll admit, this is my first meeting, so.
See you again.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And we'll recognize you next time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we are still in audience sharing. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I, I'm Emily Robinson. Um, I actually went through the Northbrook School System as, and now I've just moved back here with my own family. And my oldest daughter is in first grade, and I wanted to provide just a little snapshot, um, of what our experience has been so far moving. And we moved here in the beginning of the summer, and, um, we gave notice in May that we would be coming. And we ended up being redistributed to Peaslee, which has been wonderful. Um, my experience with Dr. Bernhardt has just been fabulous. Um, my daughter has some special health concerns that have been really well addressed. And, um, so I just want to preface my comments with how pleased I've been with my experience. They are her teacher. Um, we've had a little bit of difficulty with the busing, which I'm sure you've heard lots about. Um, and, but our issue comes in, I think, because of the redistricting, our, um, bus, my daughter's bus does a Peaslee route. Or no, they come and get her in the morning and then do a Peaslee route, and then they drop the Peaslee route off and then bring her home. Which I understand makes sense. Um, but it leaves her on the bus for forty-five minutes, fifteen minutes at a time. And yesterday, on the way to school, she was on the bus for a long time and ended up getting carsick due to the length and had to miss school. So, um, I just wanted to provide a little bit of a snapshot of how, um, while I appreciate the ratio, the importance of student-teacher ratios, um, and just, uh, a snapshot of how some of the implementation could be improved. Um, sorry, I wrote down a couple notes just to make sure I didn't forget. Um, well, the other part of the busing was on a, we live on a cul-de-sac, so, um, and we have four elementary school buses that come by and go around our cul-de-sac in the morning, um, going to, um, St. Bernadette and Lincoln and Z and Peaslee. And to me, it just seems like a little, like, resources might be used a little bit, um, better in that sense, so far as stuff, uh, the buses and gasoline and drivers. And I know it's hard to get everybody to the right schools, and part of it was because someone was redistricted last year and chose to stay. So we have in our cul-de-sac three different schools. Um, so, and on that note, um, we talked a little bit about parents choosing to keep their children in their neighborhood schools, which I think is great. Like, I will probably stay in Peaslee next year. We've had a really great experience. Um, but I think that's because we've, they've built relationships and they've, you know, not necessarily because, for any other reason, but they're, you know, their kids have friends there now, and, and so that's why they stay. Um, so my, I guess my point is about the effect on individual students, where, yes, it's good as a whole, but to make sure that those kids that are redistrict and are in the minority, but, you know, carry a lot of the burden of, of the policy. Whereas, you know, she's on the bus for so long and she had to miss school because she was sick from being on the bus for so long and all that time that she can't be playing in the cul-de-sac with the kids in the afternoon, um, is, I think, an unequal distribution of the, to carry the burden for that. Those ratios, which are good and purposeful. So good luck figuring, I'm glad I'm not the person figuring it out so far as bus routes and how to redistribute kids. But that's been our experience, positive with the school, a little bit challenging getting there and back.
Thank you. And I welcome you to, I welcome you and everyone who has a busing issue, a busing problem, to let administration know. And if, if you're not telling folks in central office, and I've found personally that sometimes there's concerns at a building level, and it's a busing issue, sometimes it needs to, the, the message does not travel to central office. You know, I know I had an issue last year myself personally, and, um, the, the school administration did not relay my concerns to central office. And if, um, when it comes to busing, you might need, I would suggest you go right to.
Yeah, and actually, at the beginning of the year, we weren't on our route, and I talked to Dr. Bernhardt, and she, I said, oh, well, can you give me their number? And she said, no, don't worry. And she called right over and we got on the route, so that part was taken care of. Um, you know, this school committee meeting is fairly early, and so I was waiting a few days to see if things, and I talked with her bus driver, who was gonna try to work things out, uh, but it stayed the same. So I will contact the office. It's just, we wouldn't have another meeting for a while, and I wanted to convey that message.
Could I ask what bus number that is?
Uh, N two.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this evening and for sharing. Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Would any other members of the audience like to share this evening? Mr. Olson? I'll introduce you. Anyone who's not familiar, you are.
Hi, I'm Peter Olson. I'm the Northbrook Teachers Association President. Uh, and I just want to, um, say that, uh, you know, that kind of, my mother used to say, uh, she was a teacher in, uh, high school in Wisconsin. And this time of year, she just loved the, the smell of new sneakers and the bush, bush of corduroy as it would walk down the hallway. And, and I gotta tell you, it's so nice seeing, uh, oversized backpacks and little tiny kids and, uh, bright neon shoes and clean smiles coming off buses and saying how glad they are to be at the school. Every year, we get do-overs. We get a do-over to start a brand-new year. Everybody is happy in the schools. And I'm really looking forward to, and all the teachers are looking forward to, the open house in the elementary level curriculum night at the middle school to share what we have for our do-overs. So just that, and thank you. It's good to be back.
Thank you.
Have a great year.
Have you back. Audience members. We'll move on. Any of our administrators, principals?
Share it out.
I would, that, I'll share it out. School committee members? I guess we're.
We did a lot of sharing today.
I guess we did. Besides, anyone? Last call? Okay. Thank you for sharing, everyone. We will, um, we have personal item, personnel items, lots.
This time of year, front and back, multiple pages. I think we, um, whether it be the principals or Rebecca's summary, um, we've certainly shared, um, the changes that have, that took place in an ordinary but extraordinary summer. That's a real factor.
Communications, Apple Fest, Sunday, September seventeenth. Coming is at one o'clock?
One o'clock.
Arrival time, we meet?
Yes.
Noon at Lincoln Street, or are we meeting at the corner?
No, Lincoln Street. I think we're lining up pretty much where we lined up last year, um, on Lincoln Street.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Well, wear your red shirts.
We've unrolled the flag to flatten it out after one year of being rolled up in the closet. So I think with some new streamers, we'll be ready to.
And will Melika be provided?
More.
As always.
As always, some wonderful walkers to.
You got it.
Lead the way.
I think we could find the last room. But we'll make sure to find you this year.
No, no, I thought, I thought you had some students that held the, uh, held the banner, yeah, and walked with us, so.
We try to get ahead of the exhaust. I carry that.
Yes. Finding that sweet spot.
Yes, I'll have some better.
Excellent.
Thank you. We have our back-to-school newsletter communications. Fantastic. Great, my, to Mrs. Leffler, great work on this. Um, we have distribution of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school committee dates.
A few tweaking, tweaks of dates mostly, um, just the October fourth, which is actually, um, the thirtieth of, uh, September, I believe. Just the way the days file, I think it's the MASC conference that's for some reason backing up the ISA.
Yeah, it is.
So that's the November date.
Wednesday through Friday.
Yeah, October will have two meetings.
So I'm a little concerned about, um, Tuesday, the nineteenth. Leave that, is that, did I hear that mentioned that those were open house?
Yes.
For K five?
Yes.
Um, might be a conflict there. What time were, what time do you expect the open house?
Six thirty to eight.
Six thirty to eight?
Yes.
So, uh, future agenda items. We have a bunch of them going.
Um, just before we move on to that, you have the four-pound MGL book. Uh, yes. If you prefer to just look online, and, um, we'll recycle the MGL book to, uh, some administrative staff. In fact, you don't want to carry it. If you want to keep that, it's yours to, to keep. I know sometimes, uh, school committee members like to look up policies online and not carry the book. Um, we love our books. We highlight all the same laws and open them up and refer to them quite regularly. So I'll collect them at the end if you'd like to donate them back, and then I'll recycle them to the administrative team. How's that?
You could donate that, Mr. Bell. You could donate that.
It's gonna cost a lot.
Now we'll jump down.
Nobody's buying.
It's a whole new paper right there.
I think I have to turn over my old one. Okay, future agenda items. As we will always, well, uh, standard items, some, we did mention our enrollments.
Mm-hmm.
Every month, and budget goals, some updates.
Anyone on capability?
Can you, oh, the K presentation, um, capability presentation.
Capital projects?
Yep.
Capital.
Update.
Probably gonna have some policy stuff to, at least for first year, you know.
Policy update.
I think, Mr. Mark, now you mentioned the professional development update.
PD.
An update on PD?
PD update.
As we do have a professional development day in October, so it's perfect timing, and we meet before that.
Alright, so which school is gonna get the, uh, school program plan P two update?
I think Alana. I think Proctor was up.
Proctor?
Yep.
We'll not be ready till, closer to November.
Okay. No, we still have to meet. It'll be a surprise. We'll have one on.
It could be the November meeting, that's at the end of October.
So sort of in October.
Sort of October, November.
October-ish.
Uh, we'll have, we may have another one filled in there by then.
And an issue that I brought up, and then it, um, I asked Cheryl, it was about the busing, and especially since we have some parents we're concerned about it, could we have an update on the busing? Because I do feel as with a parent, that forty-five minutes on the bus.
It's too long.
It's a little bit too long. If there's somehow, I, I know busing is, is always a hard thing to do, but if there's something, you know. And then also, I do know sometime between another future agenda item could be, if the technology department could give us an update. I mean, I think because with doing this day testing, I'm cast on, um, you know, the computers, is that, you know, I just want to need, know, are students doing keyboarding skills? What are they doing? You know, some districts are doing coding. I don't know what it is, but I know I heard it. So I want to know, are we also doing coding? And I will learn also along with it. But I think it's an important part of everything that we do with expenditures, is what are we teaching? What courses are the, oh, what, how are the kids getting that technology and what are they doing, you know, especially the keyboarding skills?
I completely agree, but my concern is that we don't have a director, as far as I know, yet at this point.
I think the, um, that position would not stop us from having a presentation because the good work continues. And, you know, we heard from TJ, and TJ is representative of an extraordinary technology team. Um, and what we didn't share was throughout the summer, uh, we're very fortunate that in his, in his prior life, Greg knew something about technology. So, um, he's doing, um, a masterful job at, moving forward. We had so many initiatives underway, and they're coming to fruition this year. One-to-one was one of them. And I think we'll be able to provide a very good update.
So TJ, welcome back. We welcome. We welcome you for an update. Yeah.
Yeah. November.
And, um, was any of going to be invited for the first, the early October, the true October meeting?
It's the will of the committee. I, whatever date they could make at this point, I think would probably be, uh, to be flexible.
So we'll be flexible, and we'll note that that will be upcoming. Any other agenda items? No, I'm sorry, I forgot about it. Quite, quite a number for me to make sure.
I might suggest with, um, two in October and Alana, um, principal, steer volunteering sort of for the October thirtieth date, that be our October presentation.
Okay.
And then that will allow enough time and just sort of move past the October fourth date.
So how do you, yeah, so you all have a date in mind, so that?
We'll have one presentation.
Great, thank you.
Homework.
We do have a combined meeting scheduled. I just wanted to point that out. Um, for Tuesday, September nineteenth, I mean, I realize that there is a slight bit of a conflict.
I will be late to that meeting, so I do have to. And we do have a combined meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Hosted, um, which will be a very brief half hour, we hope, meeting at six thirty at Central. And I think, uh, we're gonna have to bring in some chairs. We have a good agenda scheduled for the meeting.
And I will be there tomorrow night, and, um, I could certainly bring an update back to this committee, um, for our activity. I think it's, uh, there needs to be a recount of when you are combining it, or that's something.
And dare I ask, so?
I'm, I'm gonna take, no, no, I'm gonna take, no, I'm gonna take full responsibility for this. This was a suggested agenda item, and I asked that it be put off to the combined meeting because I felt that if another committee discussed something of those, certainly of a combined nature, I would be upset if another committee, say the, the high school or itself, who discussed it without our input. So I'm asking that we table until combined.
Sure, that's fine.
I'm sure it will be a.
For the nineteenth.
Combined meeting, a combined agenda item for the nineteenth.
Solar.
I think she said solar.
Yeah. Sola.
Sola.
So we're talking about sol.
And our next, um, meeting is November, uh, I'm sorry, October fourth is our next regular meeting of the Northbrook School Committee. Any other, um, business which needs to come before our committee this evening? Emily will enter to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, my name. All in favor?